So I'll call the meeting to order as vice chair and take over what your position. And looking at the agenda, any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. Audience and communications, maybe we'll start by just introducing everyone. And why don't we start at this end?
Bob Mason, Chief Operations Officer, Chitlin South. Greg Moreno, District Principal.
Joshua Diamond, Board Member, Vice Chair.
Kevin Broschew, Board Member.
Karen Mackleid, Board Member.
Giovanna Borrieto, Board Member.
Sandy Raymond from Central.
Amanda Marvin, Budget Buddy.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So moving on on the printed agenda, we have audience and communications. This is usually an opportunity where members of the public, if they have anything they'd like to share with us or comment on. So we invite anyone. All right. Seeing that there's none, moving on to discussion matters. Budget work session, that's the reason why we're here tonight. And Bob, I think you had mentioned you had a report that you wanted to give.
Yeah, I'm gonna do the first three items.
Okay.
And then Greg will fill in the second half of the agenda with the instructional program and the Williston specific material. But I just wanted to welcome budget buddies and provide a degree of overview of material that's available on the website in case any of you end up with sleepless nights or you're having difficulty understanding everything we're doing. It's available on the website, it's this list of material. This is Williston Budget Buddies. And a lot of it is similar from prior years, but there are some additions. Clearly, we'll spend a little bit of time tonight looking at the baseline budget and outlining the process by which you all get a baseline budget. And then the ad that I wanted to spend a minute or two on is item 16 at the bottom of the list is Act 46, Government Governance Summary. There's two major components of the most recently enacted Act 46. A governance piece and a cost containment piece. And the cost containment segment of that legislation is very involved with the process by which you're working on as a part of developing a budget for next year. So that's the material, it's up on the website, the school board's website under Board Budget Materials. So I encourage you, if one of those topics interests you, there will be some material in that packet that further explains it from a board perspective. The next two pages are a list of budget assumptions. The way the board begins the process is they ask us to develop a baseline budget for them. The baseline budget isn't intended to be a final product by any means, it's intended to get each board started in the same position. We have a set of assumptions that they develop with us to fashion a starting budget, and then all changes up and down are kind of considered from that point. The baseline budget is developed with the existing staff of the school, adjusting their salary and benefits based on numbers that are either in contract or have already been estimated to us by the healthcare provider responsible for schools. We make some other adjustments and they're delineated in the baseline assumptions for things such as electricity and utilities. And anything that isn't listed specifically in the assumptions is flatlined from year to year. And so that's how the budget process begins. And then Greg will be making recommendations from that level as it was handed to you all. So that's the baseline assumptions. Are there any questions on baseline assumptions, those first two pages?
Quick question.
Sure.
The healthcare estimate, is that old data and updated data, do you anticipate changes?
The number in your baseline budget is 7.9%. Elaine and I are given assurances that this year is gonna play out differently than has prior years. 7.9 is the number that they tell us will be on the table today and survive through January. There will be no further reduction. And we can all budget comfortably that it's not gonna go higher.
Okay. Or lower.
Or lower. Yes.
Right. In the past, that was a not to exceed number, that's not true this year.
Okay.
For two reasons. One, they want everybody to feel the real pain of healthcare costs. And two, since VHI might not be still standing, or there's a possibility that it might not be still standing, there's no reason to maintain.
The reverse.
It's just the reverse, because they will be standing.
The reverse, because they will be a viable entity going forward.
They'll be the reverse.
They're not gonna liquidate reserves the way they might have in the last one or two years. Because prior to this year, it was thought that they would not be a viable entity going forward, and that has changed. They're gonna continue to be, it appears, our healthcare administrator slash provider for our teachers.
Interesting. Even though other school districts or municipalities are moving towards entering the marketplace.
The only ones that are moving so far are those that are small enough that they have to move. By and large, the largest segment of the overall population that they take care of today are still waiting for them to take care of them tomorrow.
I have just two questions.
Sure.
So the Howard Center cost, so line 17, is that related to special ed?
Primarily services that we get out of Howard Center in support of special ed, yes.
And I guess we're gonna get, I guess, a presentation specifically for special ed, but is it because we are projecting an increase in service support?
No, we just take up the same level of service that we got prior year, up by 4% because their costs subtract along those lines before. There's no, that line doesn't denote a change in level of service, just in change of the same level its cost with Howard Center.
Okay. Which I guess.
That was all in all $363,000 increase. If you look on your, this is part of the packet, is on your, on your, I didn't say.
Yes. You jumped, you jumped a little bit.
Oh, I apologize.
No, but it's not just Howard Center.
Okay.
All of special ed for Williston is up by the $300,000 that you outlined.
Okay. Sorry, this is my first.
Yep, no, you're good.
I'm being involved more, also I might ask some dumb questions to start with.
No, they aren't dumb questions, you're great to connect to each of the documents. Appreciate the questions.
I actually had a follow-up question, so for adoption, 2014-2015 special ed was $300,000, is it 3.6 million?
That was a good answer.
Okay.
Excellent, another excellent question.
That's 3.3 million. Did they like?
Yes, it went up dramatically in the year 1415 to 1516 because the.
Did you just shift costs or something?
No, the state changed the law and structure of special ed. Prior to 1516, the Williston Board had their own special ed organization.
Okay.
And the costs were shown within their budget.
Okay.
We were required to consolidate all special ed at the supervised reunion.
Okay.
So it's just the same people, the same resources, they now are paid by CSSU checks.
Okay.
And then the costs are assessed back to the school.
Okay.
So.
The costs actually haven't really changed, it's just how it's being paid?
Can't say that.
Okay.
But I can say the bulk of the difference between 304 and 3,623 is because we moved all the costs to the SU and then moved them back.
Okay.
The costs did go up year to year.
I understand, I understand that cost shift, but that is still a remarkable increase, even if there is a cost shift on the 300,000.
Of the $300,000.
Well, you're going from 2014, 2015, from 2 million to 5 million. So that doesn't look like it was necessarily all cost shifts, there was added costs to the organization in that transaction.
How are they shifting the costs? Like where are they shifting costs from?
Let me do that one slowly for you. The core services and special ed services line went up by roughly $3,300,000. Do you see that difference?
Yeah.
That's that same difference down at the bottom.
Yeah.
So all of the preponderance of change between those two years is related to the special ed conversation that we began with. And is related to a structure change, not to a dramatic functional increase in costs.
Do you know that functional increased or the operational increase, like that percentage or anything? I think that's what we're trying to get at. Like what was the change in cost from year to year? Because it's hard to see it here. Because previous years, you know, it went up about 10,000 from 1314, 1415, like, can you give us an equivalent cost shift? Does that make any sense?
I'd have to, you're asking questions about the difference between 1415 and 1516. For me to do that well, I'd have to go back to a series of books from last year.
Okay.
Because it's not this year's increase.
Okay.
But the, I can't even remember off the top of my head, I know it was like probably 4%.
Okay.
Increase across the SU for all special ed services.
I see, okay.
Last year, it's far higher this year.
Oh, and you, do you know that percentage increase this year or not?
The special ed segment of the enterprise, that budget is developed by using a service plan.
Okay.
All of the special ed administrators work feverishly in September and October developing a list of services needed for known children and anticipated children of the system. We add up all those costs, that's called the service plan.
Right.
And that's what forms the backbone of the special ed budget.
Right. Indeed.
And it's heavily dependent on the children and the level of services needed, so it can change one year by 2% and the next year by 5% depending on changing services needed for kids.
Okay, that makes sense. And do you happen to know the percent change from 2014 to?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Not off the top of my head. Some things I do, but can't go back years to do it well. And then the other thing I'll leave you both with is the special ed conversation is one that principally isn't gonna happen with this board, because this board gets their services from CSSU, and CSSU charges for them those services based on ADM. So the anguish over if we're doing the right thing with special ed is a conversation that the CSSU board has, which is three of these members and three from every other. So it's still a group of board members listening to it, but it's a different board than this one.
I figure it might be helpful to know that at the SU board meeting in November, November 17th, the common topic presentation was special ed. Megan Roy did a presentation to show where we are right now and to share that whereas in prior years, we had had one service plan meeting in each of the schools, and then that was the special ed budget, based on like what are the needs for each student, based on the students you had, the students you were anticipating. And this year, when that number came in, there was a second round of service plan meetings to say, okay, well, now that we can see it all at the top, we can see that some schools are doing this for less, the same service, so how are we doing that? So that second number that came in was already less than the first number. Wednesday night, the SU board, and there are three members sitting right here, will be looking at that number and saying, okay, are, do they feel comfortable that that's the right number? And then that will get worked into. There are lots of steps, and we feel that as a result of centralization, there was more scrubbing of those numbers than there ever has been.
And you can view that presentation that Megan gave on RETM.
Yeah, I actually have.
Okay. Just another note about Howard Center. Our social worker in each building is a Howard server, Howard Center employee. That would not be special ed.
No. But you'd use the same address, or we would on your behalf.
And then, sorry, one last question.
Sure.
So line 21, substitute expense, what is that?
Line 21, you're on.
Back in assumptions, sorry.
I believe, okay, that is an additional item this year you've not had in the other, any other year. Those of you who have been around the barn a few times or whatever will know that we've always had a problem with paying far more money in substitute expense for teachers or paraeducators or who are out of the building for whatever reason. And upon reflection, each board, all five, seriously underfunded subs each year. So we came up with a budget assumption this year that brings substitute expense more in line with what schools have spent. And so this is the assumption that does that. Instead of leaving it flatlined as we might have in prior years, we're looking at the three years prior average, adding 5% and then putting it in your budget.
So I vaguely recall years past that there have been packages presented about changing the hourly rate for substitutes.
Yes.
Does this embed an assumption that the hourly rate remains the same?
Josh, I'm gonna have to get back to this, what one doesn't specifically, because there was two things causing us a problem. One was the rate was too high to attract individuals to be subs.
Too low.
And then, and then we were seriously underfunding it. This is more the seriously underfunding it, and it's unlikely you will see a decision packet from any of the three of us to further adjust substitute expenses.
I thought we approved it last year to go up to 100.
Is that 90 now?
Oh, well, from the year, whatever it was.
Can I back up real quick?
Sure.
Move back to your social work. I see that you have a 100% reduction in technological services. Is that being reallocated to the Howard Center or into your CSSU services line?
Yes, that's the result of it. It used to be a separate line for this board to get their psych services from CSSU, it's now part of the special ed pool, that's about 10 lines up above consolidated special ed.
Okay.
Can I go back to the substitute expense? So I can understand that we want to make sure we cover what we are spending, but is there ever, is there an analysis of like, are we, you know, do we have too many subs in our schools? I mean, are we relying on that? I know we've had to use it in the past because of a lot of needing them in the classrooms to do a lot of the math work and best practices work, we've needed a lot of subs. But are we past that where we can see our use of substitutes getting to like a more normal level? I don't know. I mean, as a parent in the schools for the last, you know, nine years, I mean, I've just, I've seen it just escalate and escalate. And I don't want us funding at that escalated level if it's really changing. You know, that doesn't make any sense to fund at that escalated level, so.
I can say from last year, from what I know about last year to this year, and this year to next year, there aren't any programmatic reasons for substitute costs to increase.
Okay.
The work that we're doing around best practices in mathematics and other things that require substitutes are gonna remain steady. It's gonna be there, but it's not gonna escalate.
Okay.
The other piece, though, I think, is that just the substitutes required for paying for teachers who are absent, the amount that that ends up being is more than what has been in the budget historically.
Right.
So we overspend it.
And we're finding across all schools, across all areas, it's increasingly difficult to find subs.
Yep. I just have a question, is there any, do you guys look at the correlation between the increases in special ed needs and the increases in substitute needs at all? It might seem as you have an increase in special ed needs that you might need more substitutes to lead them, help them, I don't know? Or if the special ed teachers need to go get more training or do other things to help them?
No, I wouldn't say that. Yeah, we wouldn't use substitute teachers to provide supplemental or any services that are included in a student's IEP. And I wouldn't say there would, anything is happening in special education that's causing a dramatic or even significant shift in the professional development required that would require substitutes. Very often when a special educator is out of the building, we don't get a substitute for them because the substitute isn't able to do what they do.
I see.
It's very difficult to find a substitute to be a, for a special education teacher.
Assumptions, done on assumptions?
Yes, thank you.
Going once, going twice? Okay, the next two pages are your baseline budget that, as I said, you begin your process from tonight. The first is a function summary, the same budget is recast on the next page as an object summary. The function summary is breaking down costs within the school district based on the functional area or team with which that cost is centered around. And then on page two, by object means, for example, the first line, we gather all their salaries and benefits across the organization regardless of what functional area they occurred in and lump them together. So it's just a different way of looking at the same budget, but the totals will be the same at the lower right-hand corner whether we capture it function way or object way. I'm willing to answer questions on either of.
So on the object way. I'm looking at, you know, professional services, the CSSU assessment and the CSSU services. The professional services in particular has a 22% increase, is that?
Say that again.
That.
Karen, I was trying to do two conversations at once.
It was multitasking. The object, I'm on the object summary page.
Yes.
And the professional services line is increasing 22%, 100, over $100,000. What is driving that particular increase?
It's primarily, I'll have to look.
Okay.
I was gonna say special ed, but I think it's special ed, the professional services would show up in line 53320. So let me, let me dig into that and I will get back to you possibly at this same meeting.
Okay.
My question regarding professional services, if the IRS defines professional services pretty much as a consulting fee, so people who are not employed by your organization. Now, looking at the school districts and being a community member, I see you have a lot of talented people in this school, and the fact that you're spending 564 on consulting fees is a little bit concerning if that's really what is in that line.
Professional services is not defined by the IRS per our purposes, it's defined by the Agency of Education in Vermont.
Okay.
So there might be a little bit of difference in how we collect and tabulate that.
So I just want to understand what's in that line.
I will, I will give you an idea, Greg and I will give you an idea before you leave tonight.
Awesome. And if not tonight, just sometime this week or early next week.
Okay.
So Bob, if I may?
Yep.
Just looking at deviations as well, just trying to get a understanding, early learning partnership?
Early learning partnership is the partnership program to provide resources and assistance to eligible community preschools of which your children attend. The payment shown on your budget for ELP is in essence tuition payment that is provided by law to families whose kids enroll in participating preschools in your community. And the payments go up both by the fixed rate adjusted by the state year to year, it went from 3,000 a year to 3,300, and also by the number of children that you have partnering in the program. So if the number is significant beyond that, it's because you've got a lot more kids attending, forecasted to attend next year than you do this year.
And remember that with the kids that are attending, the new kids that are attending, you are getting full value for them in your ADM this year. And in the past, all of it has been like looking back two years. For this particular set of students, it's, and going forward also for the ELP students, it's, you realize the benefit right away. So that could help you when they look at the equalized pupils, and might help you in particular this year when we're under such constraints with budget.
So that's a pretty big increase. How many people are receiving that program, benefits from that program? Or is that mostly a state?
So it's any, any three or four-year-old who wants to, that's now an entitlement.
Yeah.
And you'll see a greater increase in those communities that haven't already pretty much gotten kids involved at the three and four-year-old level.
And they're not students in our schools, they're students in other area preschools.
Right, and I think, wasn't it also because there might not have been an increase in the students in school, but the state is now paying for it? Like, so kids who were three and above and in preschool, they'll get paid, they'll get some compensation back? Is that this number that's reflected here?
This is the number they're getting back. The families of Williston are getting back this number. And in return, Williston is getting to count these kids in ADM and getting .43, I think?
Yeah.
Something like that, of a student in your ADM count, which is how you get money from the state for education.
Is that now AAA?
Not AAA.
No, AAA is separate from this. This is, if you, if you bump into somebody in Montpelier who is quite thrilled with all they've done for pre-K education in the state of Vermont as far as new benefits and strengthening the resources that are provided to our children, this is, this is the cost of that initiative. It is children ages three to five that aren't already part of our system, they are not AAA, they are general, it's generally tuition help to families and strengthening the talent pool that operate within local preschools that are participating members.
And is it correct that this is a recent legislative initiative within the last couple of years?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chitlin South was an early adopter, so all of our schools were participating in the program, providing the resources far earlier than those who came in when it was required and mandated that everybody be participating. But still, the numbers vary year to year based on children that are found that then can find a school to enroll in that qualifies in just a year.
In the beginning, the preschools were paid the money, not the family.
Correct.
We were still brokering that whole piece, though. I think it was the preschools, but it was brokered through CSSU.
Right.
I think that the particular issue with Williston was that there were many three and four-year-olds who were enrolled, but there were not necessary, necessarily so many preschools that had gone through the rigorous process of getting their four stars or whatever so that they could take the money. And with the legislation, it kind of behooved all of them to get the rigorous approval and make sure that they have certified teachers and all of that stuff, because obviously, you know, the parents have a right to demand this, the schools can do it if they want to. The people who own the preschools would probably prefer that they continue doing that work. And so in Williston in particular, there's been an uptick in the number of preschool providers who have gone through the process, and now those students are, their parents are getting this money.
So just to clarify on Kim's question, so our preschool within our two buildings are covered somewhere else in our budget. This is all payments. This is like the AAA and the peer groups and the staff associated with those.
This is not AAA, no.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 right.
Those preschoolers are covered somewhere else, I just want to make sure we're.
Under 1219.
The preschool that you have in the back of your mind, which is a AAA program with peer models.
Right.
Is covered in special ed.
Okay.
And the costs come back to the, to the school district as a result. Anything beyond that, the CLP program is beyond that.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Is in the other line.
And that's 1219 on this list. Under function summary, that's 1219. That's where that is.
So, and these dollar figures are small, so forgive me, but I'm seeing an inconsistency. We've got projected decreases in electricity of 5%.
Right.
And natural gas only going up 1.4, but I thought our budget assumptions had figures larger than that.
No, your budget assumptions largely tie to last year's actual.
Okay.
And then they're adjusted from that. So the best example I have is if you had fuel oil, a large segment of fuel oil linear, you'd see that come down dramatically, though your budget assumption reads 3 or 4% on last year's actuals because the costs have been coming down.
I see.
And.
As opposed to the budgeted?
Yeah.
Got it.
So it's kind of nuanced the way we do the assumptions.
And transportation, such a high increase.
Transportation is the cost of providing your services that, between Kevin, John, and Greg, we've defined we need for next year, and then, and then costing those through our system. The primary cost increase year to year for transportation is driver expense. And in addition, if other schools take down their level of routes and Williston takes theirs up, Williston can see an adjustment based on that as well.
I thought we went down a number of routes. And then, you know, the cost of gasoline has gone down.
And our student count that we're actually, the kids we're picking up should have gone down.
Project is down, so why are we up?
So we shouldn't.
Okay, I'll sort of, you're talking about 53,000 in CSSU transportation assessment?
Yeah.
Question, a corollary to that, seeing that our special education costs have risen 10%, is this corollary to that also? Are we transporting more?
Are we transporting more special education transport? And is that getting accrued here?
I will, I will dig into that. I don't necessarily know that off the top of my head.
Oh, there isn't a separate, like, special education transportation line item or anything? That's not ruled under special ed?
It's ruled in transportation, if I understand correctly. So all of our transportation, whether it's for regular bus routes or field trips or special education needs, is all in that line item, correct?
Not necessarily. The, you're on the object summary and if the way you get paid the bill is as an assessment from CSSU, it's called an assessment from CSSU for either services or assessment. What transportation assessment will traditionally have been is, the bulk of it is your regular route transportation. It will include athletics, co-curriculars, field trips, that kind of thing.
Well, if that is the case, then yeah, we really want to dig into it.
Right, because-
Yeah. We, I think we tried to drop, I think we did drop a route last year.
Right. And field trips usually get covered.
By FAP, don't they?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Greg and I will dig into that one. Thank you.
There's a $351,000 increase to salaries and benefits, which is a 3.47. What programs are you adding or what programs are you removing for next year?
This budget is based on not adding any programs or removing any that I'm aware of. It is based on that salary and benefits total is contractual salaries, contractual benefits. It's adjustments in salary and benefits year to year. So say, for example, the budget was built with an employee having a single healthcare. And in this year, they move to family. That increase is going to be there as well. And then it also has changes in staffing as a result of people leaving and new people coming in. If we hire it greater than the person who left, then it's going to be an increase to this line. And if we hire the other direction, it comes down. So that's what's in that, that adjustment year to year.
If I may add, we have a collective bargaining agreement with our faculty that mandates certain percentage increases year in, year out, regardless of the staffing change.
Yep, absolutely. I'm not disagreeing with that, no.
Teachers work very hard.
They do, indeed.
Other questions on function and object?
I do. On your- What's your principal? That's a 48% decrease. That's a pretty significant variance to cover.
Yes, that principal savings is principal like in principal and interest on a building.
Okay.
And 194 is the fact that the district has, has in this budget, you're finished paying off the Allen Brook construction project.
So then, so then it needs, the spelling on it needs to get changed on the chart, Ben, right? Or no?
No, it's still A.
Still spell the same?
Knowledge of-
I'm so confused.
Only the principles we adhere to when we plan our budget.
Oh, all right.
Oh, my goodness.
Because I thought it was-
It's a good question.
I thought it was a staffing.
Elaine and I were actually in a, in a town meeting where somebody in the audience had circled that because it went the other direction and said, "How the hell can we be paying Greg $194,000 more?"
When I looked at this, I was, I was having that. I was like, "Well, okay, Walter left. What is this?"
Where do we get a deal?
Anyway, we were paying way too much for the other.
Being terminated is directly related to 30% decrease for your interest then?
Yes.
But in the interest of sharing with our community members, we, you may have seen it visually, but there are a number of capital problems with the facilities in this school in particular. And there's a study committee underway already trying to assess the extent of those problems. So it's not unforeseeable that at some point in the future, this board may be asking the community for a bond to address those deficiencies.
Would that be done in this coming budget year or in subsequent years?
I don't-
Possible.
Possible?
Yep. It's possible.
It's possible for this year? Did you say it's possible for this year?
It's possible.
It wouldn't show up in this year's budget.
It wouldn't show up in this budget process at all. It's a separate-
Separate vote?
It's a separate vote for a separate bond.
And it always starts a year later.
And it always starts. So if we, if it went to a vote this year, it would start. You'd see it on your tax assessment. It's your fault.
Can you tell me what a direction center is?
Sure.
I can explain it.
You gonna go for it?
The direction center is where counselors are. That's where behavioral problems would go that can be dealt with in classroom. If we needed added support as a teacher. That's-
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next two, next page is, is the CSSU assessments that I wanted to touch on. It is a profile of the current baseline version of assessments coming back to Williston from CSSU. This is a work in process. As Elaine has mentioned, the CSSU board has their next meeting this Wednesday night. And they will likely be weighing in on a number of changes to these numbers, forecasting out what work they're going to get done Wednesday night. I just wanted to give you a quick recap. The top four lines are the core services of the SU that schools are obligated to cover as a result of being a member of the supervisory union. They include the office of the superintendent, board expense, human resources, and fiscal services of which I'm part of. And shown is the cost as it's allocated primarily by average daily membership to the Williston community versus other communities of the SU. We've talked about special ed and that is now part of core services and has risen significantly based on the service plan development that we discussed earlier. The balance of the lines are, we call purchase services, they're to a degree services that you as a district could head to the SU to provide or you could find someone else that satisfied your need different than us and head that direction. They are technology. The technology line is the interconnection communications, kind of the wires and devices side of technology. It is not classroom technology. Early learning partnership, everybody in the room is very familiar with. This $11,000 is the operational expense to manage the program across the SU. It is not the expense paid to parents for the benefit of tuition relief. CY program is connecting youth primarily for schools. It's mentoring program expense and SAP counselors. Food services is, as it says, the cost of operating the food service program here at Williston. It is in essence, this budget line is limited to staffing costs and does not come back to your general fund budget. It is picked up on Scott's budget for his food service operation instead. But it's part of the CSSU budget, so it's shown here as a reference to Williston. Transportation assessment is primarily the cost of regular routes.
I was going to ask, does, how does this relate to the other transportation number?
It's the same line, it's the same dollar figure. The, I just double-checked that before I opened, finished my mouth here. It says 485856 is an assessment. And under the object budget, it says CSSU's transportation assessment is 485856.
Okay, I'm doing the math in my head, but percent increase from like 2015 to 2016, that's not like 40%, is it? That's like 15?
It's 12.27 on my other document.
Oh, you had 12.27?
On the object.
Oh, okay.
And I'm going to tell you what that 53 is in detail. I already have that circled with a balloon around it, so we'll come back to you on that one. English language learners is our obligated services to children of whom English is not their primary language. We're required by law to provide those services. We get no, no state or federal assistance directly for that. But this is the, the share of Williston's direct service to children. So Greg and Jeff at our office have determined that they need four days of ELL in support of a certain number of kids. That's what the budget's built on. So that's a quick survey through purchase services.
Any questions about? Bob, I do have one quick question. So I vaguely recall at a previous CSSU board meeting, there was a budget, a proposed budget that was presented. Do these figures reflect that previous budget or are these the figures represent what you're going to present us tomorrow?
Previous budget.
Okay.
We don't, we don't change numbers until after a board has taken action. It's been a rule.
Okay.
Okay. The last sheet I wanted, I saved the best for last. This Act 46 sheet is the last one I want an opportunity to save, say five words on. There are two components to the last year's enacted Act 46 from the State Legislature of Vermont. A portion of it is on governance. There's a group of committee members across the five, five communities of CSSU meeting on a regular basis, almost like every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in an effort to bring to communities an opportunity to decide whether it's time to consolidate the governance structure of the supervisory union. I won't go into that in detail here because there's other places that that is answered. My purpose tonight is just touch on Act 46 cost containment down at the bottom. There is a feature of the law that says schools need to meet a predetermined allowable growth percentage, cost difference from last year's cost per pupil to next year's cost for, current year's cost per pupil to next year's cost per pupil. And the state has generously already designated that percentage for Williston. It is 2.31%. So, so we as part of this process will want to keep you apprised of what that number means to whatever budgeting work you're doing. Our best numbers so far for somewhat of a moving target are, if you had an objective to move below the 2.31% cap, you would need to reduce the budget by-
596,000.
Right. And so it's a significant, it's a significant burden.
596 from the current 2.96?
Correct.
Almost 597.
And the per pupil census that this is based upon, is that this year's per pupil census?
Actually, the three of us are lucky recipients of an early draft equalized pupils out of the AOE. So it's based on numbers we got from Brad James in the AOE last night at about 9:30.
But, but is that based upon current year enrollment, next year's enrollment, previous year's enrollment?
It's based, the number for your tax calculation this year and this process is the number for equalized pupils for fiscal year 17 is a compilation of the students that were in school the beginning of this year and the beginning of the prior year.
Okay.
Okay. So they've taken all that real data on actual student enrollments and added it up, divided by two, made it equalized rather than actual, and then issued the numbers. They'll freeze those numbers in their final form in the next two weeks. We don't expect significant variance from the numbers that Brad issued last night, but there will be some. Since it's equalized, anybody changes anything or corrects anything anywhere in the state, it has a tendency to change everybody's numbers.
So-
Sure.
In order for us to stay under or at that allowable growth percentage, we would have to reduce this flat, this baseline budget that sheets we just went over by 596, 97?
Yes, that's correct.
So there is a projected dollar change now on here of 685, so we're talking about almost flatlining from last year to this year?
Forty, yes. For you as a community to stay underneath the cap or the AGP and not be in spending or tax penalty, you would have to reduce that much money from your baseline budget.
Okay.
So can you tell me what the tax penalty would be per $100,000?
In essence, the tax penalty in the formula is for every dollar you as a board spend above the 2.31% cap, you're taxed twice.
$2 for every dollar you're trying to raise and the extra dollar goes to Montpelier. To the Ed Fund.
Taxed on 4%, or .04%?
You'd be taxed on every dollar above the 2.31.
But if we submit this budget as it's written here-
Right. So at 2.31, you're taxed in the way that you always are at the regular tax rate. But for every dollar above the 2.31, the differential between 2.31 and the 4. whatever, that would be $2 for the local taxpayer, not across the whole state, just for the local taxpayer. I have a question. Is the $500,000 based on the updated number we got from Brad?
Yes.
That's the updated number for Brad?
Yes, the tax formula in the state of Vermont is based on spending per pupil. And for, for, say you're, you're spending per pupil to stay under the cap is $14,000. For every dollar above $14,000 that you spend, we're going to add another dollar in. So say you're $10 over the limit, we're going to adjust, not we, the state generously for you is going to adjust that 410 to 420 because it was over the cap and then, and then calculate your tax rate. So that's why it feels like you're spending twice as much money for every dollar you spend over it. But it's all figured on cost per pupil.
So, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm just going to slow down a little bit here because it's too confusing for me. So we appreciate your patience. So this current year's budget is 7.319, right? The baseline for this coming next school year-
17.
What did I say?
Seven.
Oh, sorry. 17. Sorry. 17. Now, the baseline proposed for next year is 18.004.
Correct.
Okay. So the difference between these two, so if we were to maintain status quo, right? We would have a 3.96% increase.
That's correct.
Of year over year, plain and simple. Now, to understand where those, what those 560 whatever thousand dollars were-
596,000.
Right. Say 600,000, just to understand what that really means for me. So the cap is 2.31%. So every dollar over the 2.31, right? Is what we would be penalized by.
Right. Or the, every dollar over the per pupil.
So if I were to multiply the 17.319 of this year plus 2.31, that would give me, and I have to use my calculator.
It doesn't work that way, though, because it's on equalized per pupil.
If our pupils were the same number?
Yeah. So, but could we, I guess where I am getting stuck is when we talk about 600,000 below budget, am I hearing that we, we will have to go the 17? No, I saw that, but I'm just trying to understand it on plain terms, right?
Okay, let me, let me take a shot at it, Gia.
Yes.
The fundamental thing you need to have in your back of your mind is that, don't try and take the 2.31 and get it too close to the 3.96. 2.31 is the cost per pupil variance from year to year. And there's two ways that can change dramatically. One is to increase costs and the other is to, to lose students. You're unfortunately the recipients of good work in both those negative areas. You've got fewer students in the formula this year than you had last year and you've got to increase costs. So that's why I say you can't really go and tie those two numbers that quickly.
Right. No, and I understand. I'm sorry. What I am just trying to get my head around is those 500 or 600,000 dollars, I should be subtracting them from the 18 million?
Yes, or the 685.
That would be the simplest way to think about it. Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
So Bob, maybe you can help me out?
Sure.
If I'm a taxpayer in the town of Williston.
Yep.
So I need to try and decide what's best for my school, but there's always like a cost associated with it. So if we keep the budget as it stands now, what am I going to see for a change in my tax rate? Or, you know, how is it going to affect me as a homeowner? Assuming it's based on the value of my house somehow. It's a tax rate. Can we, is there, is there a way to make it understandable?
I think it could be, but to me, the first thing I think of is if it's a $600,000 number, we have to raise $1.2 million in revenue to spend it. That's our, that's the implication. Because we're going to give a dollar back to the state. So we have to raise our budget another $1.2 million in order to, in order to- So we have to raise our budget another 1.2 million dollars in order to, in order to get the benefit we're getting now.
Don't you just have to raise it another 600,000 so you have a total of 1.2, and then you give 600 to the state and we keep 600? Not to say that we should do this, but?
Right, right, right.
Is there a variance of what we're talking about between our budget and our?
Yeah, you're, you're?
Or we have to cut it? We can only spend a hundred thousand, I guess it's a, okay.
I, I understand how you're trying to connect those dots. The, the longer you go on, the more uncomfortable I become because they're, they're really not connectable. So, so what I was going to say to Kevin was if you really want to understand the impact on tax rates, let's have that conversation at the beginning of the next meeting?
Okay.
Because the state also, and they're generous handing off information, have provided a letter outlining expectations on tax rates for the next year. We have that now so that next meeting, I should be able to tell you what, what going over the cap means relative to tax rate?
Good.
And to Kevin's question, what it looks like on a four hundred thousand dollar home or a two hundred thousand dollar home next year.
Right.
That would be, that would be good information.
Okay.
Because it's not, it is complicated enough, we're not going to get there connecting some of the dots we're trying to connect right now.
So should we spiral back in and make sure we understand what we're looking at here? And we'll do that next meeting.
Yes, my point in bringing it up is there will be a tone in, in Greg's conversation, he having worked with all of us, that, that kind of starts with some sense that you might want to come close to staying away from the cap.
Probably a logical assumption, yes.
So that's, that's how it all ties together, but you're two, two meetings away from?
Getting there.
Yes, please.
Got it.
Okay?
Okay.
Sorry I've taken so long on my segment.
No.
It's kind of important for all of us to understand.
Yeah.
Or at least understand what we don't understand.
I, I don't want to jump the gun, but I want to respond to something you just said, and just timing, assuming that we are asking the administration to come up with cuts to keep us underneath the penalty provisions of, of Act forty-six. I'm wondering whether we're going to find ourselves running out of time from a deliberative perspective if we wait two more meetings to get a sense of what those programmatic cuts may be?
No, I think you're going to hear enough tonight to have some sense of how much work will be required to get there.
Okay.
It won't be definitive enough that we would have you vote, consider, or anything like that, and then you, you tell me if I misspeak here, but then at the next meeting, we'll provide you every level of detail so that you know exactly what it is we're recommending. And then at that third meeting is when you actually have to decide what you're presenting to voters. So I think it's tight, but I think we've got enough sessions in the C points to, to get there.
Could keep the papers off the marks, please. Yeah, awesome, fancy.
Okay, I was going to just present from here using the handouts, but there are some people in the audience that don't have copies. So I will show it up on the screen so everybody can see it. So two things that you might want to have in front of you. One looks like this, and one looks like this. This, many of you have seen already, this is the enrollment projections.
Got it.
We're going to share here, so if you want, we can just work from?
Are there enough to share from?
I will.
That's great.
Yeah. There we go.
Would you want to share?
Not at all. There's an extra set. Let's hold them back.
Okay, so?
Didn't read it out.
You're it? Great. So what you're going to hear tonight from me is, you know, you'll hear me say the word preliminary a lot, because everything that, and all my conversations with staff as well have, you know, pointed at this meeting, really sharing a preliminary look at some of the things we're looking at. And also I do want to give the board a sense of the process, because the administration believes the process is very important, especially in a year like this one, when we're facing a budgetary challenge of the likes I haven't seen since I've been in Vermont. So wanted to give the board a fair amount of information about the process we're following. The first slide, obviously the work we're doing should be driven by the CSSU mission. We want students who can do these things when they, you know, when they, when they leave us in eighth grade, and then, and again at CBU. And you've heard some in the last couple of years about the Williston Big Five, and I noticed in last year's board presentation as I was preparing for this year, that the school board also has had these Big Five in their presentation. And these, these Big Five are still drivers of the work we do and the decisions we make. So teachers who are prepared, well-trained, compassionate, persistent, and have high standards for themselves and their students. Schools that have a positive accepting climate and organizational resiliency. Relationships among students, parents, and teachers that support every single student. Time for every student to master the skills and knowledge necessary for success. And early intervention to ensure that students have enriching experiences, medical and dental care, and good nutrition leading up to the beginning of their school careers. This is another slide I borrowed from last year's board presentation, which I really liked, and it holds, it rings very true for this process. It really is going to take creativity, it's going to take good communication, it's going to take cooperation from lots of different constituents and fiscal responsibility certainly. So we have some big picture, you know, you heard about the CSSU mission, then we have some big picture pieces that we, you know, we use the phrase sometimes lenses through which we're making decisions. And those big picture things are around equity, making decisions intentionally ensure that educational program has similarly, similar opportunities for all students. Then we're making decisions based on data and real information and not, not intuition. Even if it is informed intuition, we're looking at data to drive responsible decision-making. And of course, I think we need to actually dump the term 21st century learning because we're in the 21st century, fifteen years or so, but we're talking about those, those skills that are for the jobs that don't exist yet. Critical thinking, problem solving, flexibility, collaboration, adaptability. So we want to deliver programming that's going to help students develop those skills. So the next slide are some of the big focus areas that are on, on the plates of Williston School educators. Every year in August, Jackie Parks has provided a work plan, basically a year at a, a year at a glance, a one-pager, for what are the things at WSD that we are really focusing on this year. And Jackie presents that after we've actually, obviously had conversation as a leadership team. And these are the big things. Multi-tiered systems of support, you've heard a lot about in the last few years. Obviously, we need to be providing instruction that aligns the Common Core state standards. So over the last few years, we've made shifts in programmatic materials that we're using, and then we've also made shifts in the way we're delivering instruction based on those new Common Core standards that aren't so new anymore. Obviously, we want to look at programming and make sure that we continue to focus on an attempt to close achieving, achievement gaps for those students who are struggling. Act seventy-seven has really caused us to put standards-based learning and personalized learning at the center of the work we do, but essentially standards-based learning, putting the standard in front, here's what we want students to be able to do, and then find out how we're going to assess it, and then deliver differentiated instruction to get there. Personalized learning plans, effective technology integration. This is not just about how many computers we have, or how good our infrastructure is and Wi-Fi connectivity. This is about how are we using technology to really get students to develop those skills that we mentioned earlier. Next-generation science standards. So we're on year two of a four-year journey to be completely on board with developing science instruction that is completely aligned with the new next-generation science standards. The best practices in mathematics work is as high-leverage as it was six to seven years ago when Williston blazed the trail with the work, and the rest of the SU jumped on. Just finishing three really deep years of study at Charlotte and being on all those cohorts with those teachers, this is incredibly powerful professional development, and we want to keep it going. Model and encourage and teach principles of growth mindset, and then the positive behavior intervention and supports is another thing that we're keeping the focus on. So I'll apologize a bit for the amount of text on these next slides. I'll try to, to skim, but I do want it to give the board an idea of the process. So this Act, this allowable growth percentage piece of Act forty-six is a pretty dramatic pressure. So when we found out about it, we wanted to make sure that faculty had the opportunity to hear about it as soon as possible. So I met with the Williston Central School and the Allen Brook staff at a staff meeting to explain basically what Bob did a few minutes ago. I also explained that it would result in a challenge number, which was at that moment about twenty thousand dollars less than it is today. So the administrators have started to dig into our analysis of the academic programming we provide, the multi-tiered systems of support. We've looked at enrollment projections, class size, things like that. We thought because this year presented unusual challenges, I was, I was looking for a way to get more ideas. So we created a simple survey that went to all staff that would be anonymous, and that was circulated, and staff have provided ideas around creativity, creative programming and cost-saving measures. A staff work group has been formed to review and compile those survey results and identify potential opportunities for cost-saving measures. Obviously, we need to consider local and standardized assessment data, including S-BEC and NECAP. We're looking at staff schedules and whether, you know, how effectively and efficiently we're using the staff we have. I'm on the next slide. That should have said prior to this board meeting, sorry for that typo. Wanted to let the board know that some of the ideas that are going to be shared on the final slide here, though they're intentionally generic, some of the categories, when you get to look at them and you, and you, it doesn't take long to think, hmm, if there's a reduction in that area, and that means a person with this particular license, and I happen to know that I'm the person who's lowest in seniority in that license area, that could mean my job. So the administrators tried to identify all the people who could be potentially impacted if some of those areas under consideration came to fruition. So we did meet with those people individually prior to this meeting today. Carter Smith and I also offered support staff the opportunity to meet with us, because with support staff, there's so much turnover from year to year, about 25 percent. We could reduce support staff, which we do expect to do, but not today, we couldn't identify who might lose their position. So we just gave the information generically to them. The staff work group that I mentioned is meeting this week to review the survey intermis, information.
Greg, can you give me an example of support staff, please?
Sure, a para educator, teacher assistant, basically anyone who's doing any work here that's not a licensed professional.
Thank you.
Sorry, but when you say para, are you talking about non-special ed paras?
It could be special education or non-special education, okay? Even though special education was already presented at the SU board level, which I did, I shared that information with them as well. So we, the work that we have yet to do is the budget work group that I mentioned, analyzing that survey data, and then the leadership team continuing to analyze areas under consideration along with information that comes out of that work session.
Greg, another question?
Yes.
So did you get good participation on the survey that you did?
Yes, we received almost 60 responses, and there were three questions on the survey, and the people took it really seriously.
Sixty out of how many potential?
Good question. Off the top of my head, I don't know how many?
Three hundred?
Total. I don't think it's that many. Yeah, I was going to say closer to 200. I'm not sure.
Not all staff received the survey?
Everybody received it. Not everybody took the time to do it.
I have one question. Fill it out. I didn't fill it out because I didn't feel like I had a creative response, and I didn't want to be finger pointing. So I personally chose not to fill out the survey for that reason. It had nothing to do with, I just felt like I didn't have an out-of-the-box idea, and so I didn't want to sit there and finger point. So I chose not to.
Thank you.
So the next slide is our current enrollment and staffing and the projected enrollment. And the way I broke this out was by grade bands. Triple E is by itself, kindergarten is by itself, but then we have first and second, third and fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth. The administration has found that helpful to, to group those in dyads like that. So the second column, the current enrollment and how many teachers with the, that should say, my apologies again, that should, projected is for 2016, 17?
Yes, that is.
Yep, sorry about that. Current class sizes, and then projected class sizes if staffing were to remain the The reason there's that note about the minus one in kindergarten and the plus one in first grade, if you probably recall the conversation around last year, a first, second teacher moved down to kindergarten to meet the needs of a larger class, and the plan was for that teacher to follow up those kindergarteners to first and second grade. So these numbers don't reflect any staffing changes. At this time, I would, you know, point to this document, which I shared with the board, which many of you have seen already. This is just a big picture, big picture lens at our projection in the next 10 years. And over the next 10 years, we're looking at going down by roughly 100 students.
Does it kind of break out as to what grades will be going down? So if it's starting at the younger ages, are the younger ages going to be going down before the older ages type of thing?
Yes, there is actually, it's on the website? Yeah. So the full NESTAC report that shows every grade, every year, in a big scattergram can be found on the website.
Probably an obvious question, but that would probably be taken into consideration when you're looking at what staff positions to reduce.
Yes, yes.
So in years past, we've also looked at, I think there's like a state standards document for what the class size should be for different grades. So, you know, even though looking at these projected class sizes, like what's the, you know, what's sort of the expected class size for different age groups based on?
Generally, K four, 20 and under, taken, averaged, and five, eight, 25, when averaged Okay, so then the next slide, this, you've already heard about this. This is just the reality of the challenge presented by the allowable growth percentage.
Excuse me, Greg, I'm sorry. Going back on this page, this doesn't show any of the support staff, correct? This is just?
Just teaching staff.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yes, it also does not show related art staff, so people who teach, present. So this is just the reality that Bob framed already for us. So all this discussion about reductions kind of lost sight of the process that the board has gone through in the past around decision packets. So there, there were, back in October, we started the process of, you know, a call for decision packets, and when we got the news of allowable growth percentage, I didn't want to just slam on the brakes and undermine that process. I think it's a valuable process. I think it's a valuable process. So we did receive some decision packets and these were presented to the program council who has voted on them. They will be, I will ask the board to vote on these next meeting. Also, the FAP will get a look at these. I'm not going to share a lot of detail this evening because you'll get more detail later. When taken together, they add up to about $85,000.
$85,000 is not included in this.
That is correct. These would be, these are proposals for additions.
Right, okay.
Okay? There is a possibility, there is a possibility that the second decision packet, the smartboard projector replacement, could be expensed in this year's budget.
Honestly, that's new. Amazing, nine of those are.
I know.
Fail. They're new.
Is there something about that technology?
Those projectors are not new.
Well, I guess technology.
Well, they're all new within the last four or five years because they started off, FAP started funding the first few and then the rest were in the budget.
Yes, and this isn't the whole smartboard. This is the projector part.
Okay. I was gonna say $10,000 doesn't seem like the.
Yeah, a smartboard.
So it's sort of replacement cost for some of the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the last slide, and I want to, you know, reiterate that this is not meant to be an all-inclusive list. There are things on this list that could come off the list. These are things that the administration are considering and this is prior to the work that I mentioned earlier with the budget work group that's going to be looking at the survey results and a lot of work that has to happen. So these are things that are getting preliminary attention and those include, well, we expect, we can't put a number to it quite yet, but we expect to have a reduction in the special education assessment from the SU based on reductions that were made through the service planning process. That was WSD reductions. We're looking at, exploring the reduction of TA staffing levels at both schools. We're looking at reductions to other support staff positions that support specialized program areas or locations. We're looking at class size, so that would mean essentially classroom teachers. And that has, the focus of that conversation has been K4. We're looking at possibility of reductions in related arts programming and staffing, including world language at WCS. We're looking at reducing technology equipment expenditures. That's basically, yeah, essentially in the equipment line as opposed to supplies and infrastructure. We're looking at reducing custodial staffing levels. We've found some curricular supplies and material expenditures that can be reduced and we're going to again explore the transportation, all the bus runs, do some analysis about walking for, within a certain radius, especially this side of Route 2, because we understand when you're crossing Route 2, we're likely going to be needing to add staff in the form of a crossing guard. So, but that's another area. And as I, I want to reiterate that this is a, this is not meant to be an inclusive list. These are just some of the things being considered at this point.
Can I suggest one if it's not already and something that you've looked into? And I understand that the cafeteria services is, it's a line in itself, but it does have a rather considerable amount of funding that comes from the school board. So I just want to really have us take a look at, there is a need to feed especially those who have low socioeconomic status. So that need should by all means continue, but having to have full staff, to have food for staff and other kids who can't afford to have their meals done, that should be a really big opportunity for us to look at because quite honestly, I see some things here that really concern me. For me, if I may say this right now, the fact that we are even considering to remove world language is a big no. This is like a core value of education for us.
I don't think you're talking about removing world language.
None of these things would be removed.
It's not, it's not, it's not removing it.
I don't understand what the reduction is because the kids have to go somewhere. So if you have 100 kids and you need five teachers to support those 100 kids and you remove one teacher, you're not removing the 100 kids.
Correct.
So there gets to a point with economy to scale where a teacher's going to become ineffective if you're going to put, you know, the, overload them and have classrooms that aren't conducive to maybe 10% of those kids' learning styles. And then a situation like that, you're only going to increase your directional.
Specialized costs.
Yes, thank you. Disproportionately, because you have a 4.8% increase for that going into next year, but it seems like with this proposal, you potentially have a bigger increase for that. So what are the ripple effects of getting rid of these programs?
Just to clarify, this is not a proposal. This is a list of things under consideration.
Like ideas on the table.
Okay, for proposal. And the piece around class size is what I heard you speaking to the most. That's really, those are decisions you need to make really thoughtfully. Look at what school quality standards say, look at where we're positioned, obviously do the math, do reduce of teacher, what does that mean for class size, what does that mean for the master schedule? And we make those decisions really thoughtfully. Nothing that we're going to do quickly.
I have a question, kind of like a suggestion, maybe something has been considered. So you have contracts with your teachers. Has it been put on the table to renegotiate that so that instead of getting hypothetical numbers, a 5% increase in pay this year, you get a 4% or a 3% with, yeah?
I just want to spare anybody a problem a week and we're not the ones that could ever bring that up.
Who brings it up?
Well, if they, if somehow the teachers association wanted to come to us and say, hey, what about, but if we brought it up, I'm pretty sure that would be an unfair labor practice.
We have a negotiation, we have a contract with them for a number of years and we're renegotiating that contract. And that comes to, that starts a year, a year and a half. So from now, that process will start again. We're in the middle of a three-year contract. So at that point, we can open up those negotiations.
But nobody here could do it? It would have to be like a teacher's idea who maybe takes it to their side of the association?
It can't, it won't be us. We're, we have a contract with them.
Got it, okay.
That's what we negotiated.
Okay.
And as Bob said, the administration's intention is to be bringing, on the 21st of December, the shift will be from preliminary things under consideration to recommendations.
That's the next meeting.
For the boards, that's the next meeting, two weeks essentially from today.
So are you, I mean, you've been involving staff in a lot of this, are you sort of doing a reverse decision package, you know, kind of model?
Essentially.
Yeah.
Although I've been really careful to say to staff that are involved with the process that it's, we don't consider it their responsibility to make recommendations. That's going to fall to the administrators, but to go through the survey results and potentially notice, make connections, notice opportunities that may not have come up.
Do we know, like, not just looking to next year, but farther out years, like what those projections will be? Are we going to like continually have to cut year to year? Do we have a feel for that or is this going to be kind of like a one-time, okay, pinch in your belts and then you can just kind of breathe a little bit through that year? Teachers in that year or anybody in that?
This is a two-year. It's in statute for two years, the allowable growth percentage. So each year, they're going to factor in through their metric what it is each school is allowed. And it is, they've considered that they think there should be no more than 2.5% total new education money. And so the way they did it this year was to say if we take all of these 300 and something school districts in the state and we line them up from the, according to their very narrow metrics in the last two years, the least spenders to the highest spenders and we factor in a bunch of things, some people are getting zero. Some people's allowable growth, there are school districts in the state whose allowable growth for the next year is zero. And then for those that have been spending the least, their allowable growth is up to 5.5%. We are smack dab in the middle.
And it's a two-year projection, you said?
It's a two-year.
It's a two-year feature of law.
Mandate. So there are a lot of, there are a lot of conversations around whether or not this is a really smart way to curtail costs.
Much less legal.
Right now. Really, there really, there are a lot of conversations, but the fact is we're in a budget cycle. Our budgets are going to be sent to the, to the printers and to the state before the legislature has a chance to do anything with this. So that's the hard reality of where we are.
Can I ask a general question? Because I know everybody who's in this probably agree with me, but who are the legislators that like we could address on this? Because just for argument's sake, CB was voted one of the top high schools in the country and now it's getting penalized for being one of the best and like that's, that's just not right. Like as a taxpayer, like, yeah, and as a taxpayer, like I chose to live in Williston because of the way the schools are. You know, so who can we talk?
So our legislators here, Jim McCullough, Karen McKegh, and Judy Lyons, those are the ones that are Williston.
Can I have, can I ask another question? Kind of going back a lot on, and this goes back to what you were talking about earlier. When we were going over the CSSU expenses, so CY is there. And so parentheses for a second, in our last school board meeting, we talked about whether we were voting yes to get those services provided, but we did not have to fully agree that we were taking CY in that line. So how does that fall within this budget? And is that?
We provide you that opportunity to come back towards us and tell us if you want to do something different with CY. And we'll accommodate that.
Because, can you remind me how much money?
$80,000.
It's in the last page of your budget memo.
Oh, sorry.
$42,113, excuse me, wrong.
That's not our number.
$80,962, yeah, I grabbed the wrong page.
Because I would like to, and I, this is going to sound horrible and I'll say it again, like I said in our last school board meeting, I am fully supportive, just for the record, of the value of CY. Let me make that clear. But in the interest of the whole, in the interest of equity, equity and making sure that we provide the best services across the board, I want to make sure that we don't take out of sight what those $80,000 go in terms of per student cost or value versus the whole of our 700 and how many do we have now?
Students?
Yes, students. So 1,000. So I just would like, this is an unpopular comment, but I would like, and most likely maybe you are considering it in your proposal for potential reductions.
Here's what's a little bit tricky about CY and I don't know for sure how it plays out in Williston, but there are some CY services that are, services that if you weren't having CY do it, you would have to find somebody else. So there are EQS, education quality standards around alcohol and drug education, for instance, that in some of our schools anyways, that's who does that. And there are other comprehensive health. CY does that here?
So.
I don't know here. I'm saying, it depends, here they do. They did when I was here many years ago. I don't know if they do now. It's not the same across the SU. People do not do, you know, take the same resources and apply them the same way, but that's what is a little bit tricky about CY. There are some pieces of it that might be connected. It doesn't mean that you can't look at the ones that, no, this is totally discretionary. So we can, we, if we don't have this, we don't have to backfill it. But you want to be careful that you, you've got like this $85,000 figure in your head and know that, oh, wait a minute, only $40,000 is really discretionary.
And so for next, next meeting or at some point, can we follow up to really understand what is discretionary versus?
Right, because if we look at, if we look at five years or six years of budgets on here for CY, it's gone from $17,000 for two years to $46,000 to $51,000 to $73,000 to $80,000. And there could be other changes that have resulted in, you know, those increases.
Right, the grant money going away.
Right, I thought, I remember that with Walter.
And so whereas it used to be that it was a, you know, it was wonderful.
So the full, the full budget of the, of CY is different than what our share?
Right.
Yeah.
Megan did a pretty good summary of CY in total, the array of services and what funding and support and into this question of services that need to be provided if they don't come from underneath her umbrella of CY. So I'd have you head back towards, it was in the CSSU report last month, I believe, if my memory's.
Yes, I think that's right. And it's broken at our, our school level?
It was, it was, she's doing the program across the SU, so it was more helping to explain the nature and complexity of CY. Things such as some of it is services that you need to get, other is, a large portion of it is a mentoring program that, that has some flexibility school by school and in some schools is a more essential part of the program than others. But it, that would be good reading as a background to Greg and I figuring out a way to get CY on the agenda at next, your next meeting.
And you don't want to, if you're making changes in other areas, some of these programs are really helpful to support the needs of kids that, you know, may be just getting by, so you want to make sure you keep their supports in place, given you're making other changes across the school, so, you know.
I completely agree, but I, personally, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I would like to understand a dollar figure that is discretionary.
Yeah, everything's got to be looked at.
Yeah.
I have a, this is a total topic change, is that okay? So there, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Act 46 kind of has two parts. It has a carrot where it's like, okay, we'll give you some tax break and then this is the stick that we're talking about. They're coming at you for cost containment. Is there any way to have people donate their carrot that they get to a grant or a fund that we could then reapply to the school funding?
The carrot you're talking about is the governance?
Yeah. Yeah. It's because it's a tax break, is it, does it not take effect this year? I thought it took effect the first year that, so if you.
The first full year that you, if, if the committee.
Can pass in June.
Kevin and Karen are both on this committee.
Right.
Will, decides to take it to a vote in late May or June.
Right.
And the community is all vote yes, then there's an incredible incentive and then what would happen is the 10 cents would come off, whatever your end tax rate would be and it would be hugely helpful.
Right.
But it wouldn't come into play until the following year. It's when you're putting your budgets together, the following year, that's the 10 cents.
Okay.
And then eight cents, six cents.
Right. Four cents, two cents.
But that is a, that 10 cents is one year.
Well, the next year is eight cents.
And it keeps on going to six and four, until it's phased out.
Yeah, five years.
And to add to that, even those 10 cents for Williston specifically are still a big question mark.
No, no, Williston gets 10 cents. It's just 10 cents.
If we decide to consolidate, if we vote for it and if it makes sense.
Yeah, 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 right. That's the only way anybody, so the carrot is only if there's a consolidated governance.
Right. But that doesn't take effect where it would help with this budget. Okay. Never mind.
Good question.
I was hopeful.
Amanda, it's a good question. I testified on the legislature on exactly that problem, that the sequence and the timing is a little, a little wrong. You don't, you don't motivate people to consolidate to save money and before they can even begin that conversation, take the money out.
Yeah.
We're dismantling program and good work that's done with kids, two years before we've been able to play out any kind of governance option. It just makes no sense. But, so I agree.
Other questions?
So is an across-the-board percentage on things that you can, you know, like, I mean, how much would that do, you know?
You mean like supplies, things like that?
Yeah, I mean, this is what we had to do when we went to 0% a couple of years ago when I first was a budget buddy, I think.
We're looking, we're looking at that. What I'm finding is that the number is, the numbers that come, you get to are relatively small and Walter and the administrators have done a lot of that work in the last.
Right, right.
So there's less there. There's really less there.
Well, just simply starting by the fact that I think 70% of our budget comes from salaries and benefits, right? So that drives the pot.
And no good deed goes unpunished because we asked administrators to keep our expenditures low, we are in some ways paying.
Absolutely.
Literally.
And on the other hand, there are people who are at zero, right?
Right.
Their adequate, their allowable growth is zero. One year's is 2.31.
2.31.
Right. We're better off than a lot of people. We're better off than a lot of people, even though, so I can't even imagine what it's like.
From what our cap is.
Can't even imagine if you're at zero.
Well, or even a small town in the Northeast Kingdom that does have a full five percent, but all of a sudden they've got to tuition out a student for special ed purposes, that five percent won't get you very far.
There are a lot of people who don't think that the methodology used is really appropriate.
Are there any volunteer programs? I'm back on this last page with your suggestions, Greg.
Yes.
Volunteer programs that you guys are considering to maybe replace any of the holes that are left? Because obviously there are going to be holes. You can't take away six hundred thousand dollars and keep everything safe.
Right. You know, that gets challenging. It does happen. So if you look probably in the last six years, you'll, I think here at Williston, or was it Charlotte, you've seen certain things added to the FIP bucket in terms of things that used to be in the regular budget. The problem is if it's programming that you want, you can't sustain it reliably with volunteers. Because you can't ask those volunteers to be there for you every day. They could decide on any given day that they're done. And that's really not programming. You know, that's, boy, this is a great thing that we have right now, but we can't count on it. So that's certainly something we can look, what are the opportunities to keep something like this going? And how could we, you know, as closely as possible approximate how, you know, but it would, I think it's a poor substitute for putting it in the budget, having it in the budget.
But if there's maybe like a period where we have to put Band-Aids on until, you know, we start getting someone.
Is there any particular area or programming that you're thinking of?
For support staff in particular, maybe. I don't know enough about the other areas necessarily, but.
Is there any way we can raise income?
We can raise income?
Revenue.
Revenue.
Building rental is the first thing that comes to mind. We do charge, the town kicks in for their use of the facility. We do charge users to use the facility.
Would that offset per pupil expenditures?
Yeah, it's net spending per pupil, so any increase in revenue will feel as good as a decrease in costs.
Is that true for Medicaid dollars that come in to offset IEPs?
Medicaid dollars coming in don't offset IEPs. Services provided by schools that used to be under Medicaid earn the school Medicaid credits, and then there's a list of things that can use those Medicaid credits to, but Medicaid doesn't help us cover the cost of service plan or IEPs directly.
It's reinvestment money. Medicaid reinvestment funds. So you get money to reinvest within a certain panoply of services.
One other thought, have we looked at, so you have the triple E programs, and you have the classes for that, and then you have this early learning program. Have we looked at the cost, is it cheaper to have the kids in a triple E program at Allenbrook, or is it cheaper to have the kids in an early learning program at another school where you're just reinforcing the tuition?
So we don't really have that choice. Parents have the right to send their kids where they will. That's absolutely a choice of parents.
It's a choice, but there's a waitlist for Allenbrook to get into a triple E program.
No, now you're talking the triple E program at Allenbrook, not ELP.
They're not the same.
They're different.
No, but what she's getting at is that could we, you know, we've expanded our triple E program in my lifetime here in Williston. And could we, I don't know, you know, like the peer group part, does it always have to be a one for one? I mean, it used to be one classroom, now it's two or?
No, I'm not even talking about that.
Yeah, but you have those, instead you have those students.
Not even, not necessarily that. It could be cheaper actually to bring the ELP students to Allenbrook and add.
Another classroom.
Right.
So some schools do do that, but.
And just look, just look at that.
So I will tell you that there are schools in the state that are in a lot of trouble right now because they went that way for many years. And the law that was passed says parents can send their kids to whatever early learning center they want to send them to as long as they have the star rating.
Right, yeah.
And so all of a sudden, some schools are left with programs and a teacher in place and dwindling student population because parents are making a different choice.
Right. In our case, though, it might be a little different because last year at least, there was a waitlist for the.
Well, because, because that's free.
Yeah, I.
Because you're mixing up two different things.
But you're right on topic. There's a lot of money now going to children of Williston residents through the ELP program. And there's a lot of money going to support of children once they come into the school as a triple E either peer or a triple E child needing services. And it is prudent to see if there can't be a more efficient way to manage that full umbrella. That's on Megan's, Megan has responsibility for both programs.
Okay.
It is difficult to easily do the work quickly because.
She was looking at you and I'm like.
I know. I saw that. I think it's because of Megan.
No, no, no. Because, because as Elaine has mentioned, the services are provided within local preschools and one, and they're provided, and it's not, the law isn't friendly to quickly moving across the two. But Megan nonetheless brings it all together, and where it makes absolute sense, we figure out how to do it, she does that. The best example is not Williston, but we have schools where the triple E program is getting smaller and smaller such that it really doesn't begin to make sense to have a teacher and a staff in the school, and it would be more economical to have the teacher reach out to the four children in the local preschool and provide those services. So saving money in total. So we do that, but it's not, it's not as easy as if it all worked for Elaine. It doesn't directly so it.
I don't think we could, it would be difficult, but I think to compete with the private market well, because they're very local to people's houses. And the benefit from the ELP is a very small amount of money. It's maybe eight hundred dollars, I think, or it might be a little more.
I think it's, I have a kid till week three next year, and I think it'll be like thirty-three hundred dollars we can get her.
It's gone up since my kids were there.
Yeah.
But still, you know, so is the cost of daycare. I think if we tried to go until six o'clock at night from seven o'clock in the morning where a lot of daycares are, we would have a hard time.
But just from my perspective, I have the three-year-old only in a half-day program. It's almost exactly like I have a child, the triple E program in Allenbrook. She's just not, my three-year-old's not old, she's two and a half. She's not old enough to go yet there. So, and I would save money if I didn't have my daughter in this private school and had her at Allenbrook. So from my perspective, it's a cost saving. I don't know if it would be from the school's perspective in terms of.
We'd only save three thousand dollars.
I'd save, no, what did you say?
We would only save three thousand dollars because that's essentially we're paying out the parents.
Right, so if you get twelve students, you save thirty-three hundred dollars on, and then you put them in a classroom. I don't know what the costs are to have other educators in that classroom. You might not need a special educator, you might need, it could just be a group of classroom peers.
It doesn't really, that's the piece that's mixed up though.
That doesn't work?
So ELP is one thing, and triple E is a whole other thing. And triple E, because in special ed law, we have to have the least restrictive environment. So we want to have an environment for special ed students that is very much like a regular environment, and that's why we have peers. And those peers get a free education. That's why there is a, you know, like we, there's a lottery because that has to be fair. Because that's a wonderful benefit. And it's to make sure that those classrooms are really rich classrooms for those kids, you know, in terms of vocabulary and social constructs and all of that kind of thing. So that's a separate thing that we need to look at differently than the ELP.
Just sort of back to transportation, just to make sure, because in the baseline budget that we did receive, there was the seventy thousand dollars that Williston paid, we approved as a budget support for food, I mean, not transportation, food services, sorry. I'm tired.
It's okay, it's good you're slowing down.
Subsidy.
The subsidy, we've always approved, so that's included in that, you know, in that baseline, so.
That is the only food service entry recorded in your baseline.
Right, but I'm saying, you know, that should, you know, that could be a help on this because that's something we, you know.
Timing's perfect. Greg and I meet tomorrow with, what's tomorrow, Wednesday? No.
I mean, that's seventy thousand dollars.
We meet Wednesday with Scott, so we'll take up the conversation.
I forget, is Scott an employee or is he a private contractor?
He's an employee of the supervisory unit in the school district.
But I wanted to reiterate what Giovanna said, which is food services, just my personal opinion, that while I hope there are areas to be cut and to be saved, to the extent that I know this board has made decisions to ensure that children from homes where food security is a real issue, we've decided to address that need. And I would be loath to support a cut that would hurt those who are most vulnerable.
And we are, I think, we couldn't even touch that. Weren't we like obligated by the state to have that? Food service support for those SES?
You're obligated by federal to provide a access to a free lunch for those qualifying for it.
Right, so and that's the part that we want to, that's what you're referring to?
If I could just interject, I think that this board has been supportive of trying to do more than the minimum expected. And so the quality of the food presented and such has been discussed and supported previously. So I'm going to come up with words in your mouth, but from my opinion, that is something that I don't want to see covered quickly. I think that's important.
We're talking about quality or?
The seventy thousand dollars was the subsidy to help balance the budget for the food services.
Absolutely. Because it costs more to serve a better meal.
Wait, 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 wait. We're talking, I just want to make sure that we're talking to the two same things. One is coverage, right? We want to protect those who cannot afford a healthy meal. And then we are talking about cost of quality of food.
And I'm somewhere in the middle, Giovanna. There's coverage and there's quality.
Well, I agree.
So could I just interject another complex piece around this? Because I think I understand where you're coming from, but you know, what happens is, let's say that you say, okay, well, we're not going to provide this subsidy, and we're only going to make sure that we're providing a program that is for those students who are, you know, nutritionally challenged, let's say. And every day at eleven-thirty, those little kids march down to the cafeteria. I would posit that you're making more damage to their little psyches as they walk down there, knowing that we're the ones that, you know what I mean? You have to think about like the whole child when you're thinking about how this is all going to play out.
Completely agree. So here's the deal, though. I do think, and this is something that we've talked in the past, and just because it, you know, it's been in different levels of priority just based on our budget abilities, I do think that then I would strongly encourage Scott to really relook at the cost of the service provided to those who are not in need. Because it is incredibly cheap.
Yep, that you can do. Yep, you can raise.
We're on Wednesday.
And it hasn't not been risen.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're about having a privatized cafeteria. Put it out for bid for somebody to.
This school board did that four years ago, if that's the school board's want. You gonna do it again?
So I think this is a very good discussion. I'm very appreciative of it. I think that it's all very good discussions. I think the fact that, you know, we're molding our future generations. Right now, the generation that we're in, the highest cost of healthcare is preventable injuries stemmed from lack of nutrition, lack of exercising, and it seems like we're talking about the programs, related arts, gym and all those programs, and nutrition that potentially set these young minds up for failure. So how do we do this? Tough question, I know that's really blunt, but you know, it's.
You approve them. You approve them and you save money at the same time. Because we're capitalists and that's how we do things.
Well.
I mean, I don't know. But you got to look at the options, right? And so if, you know, somebody can do it for less money and they can deliver a better product, then why wouldn't you go there? But you have to look into it, you have to explore it. I don't think anybody here wants our children to be eating bad food or not having access to food.
Not at all, but I just think two things.
We're all looking out for.
One, if we choose to go into, on our, to the cafeteria services, we don't have the time by the time we get this budget.
Yeah, maybe we don't.
I mean, we're outside of time from that perspective, at least for next year, from budgetary standpoint, planning process. And I just want to make sure that I am clear with what I'm saying. I am not saying we take away the food service that we provide. I am not saying that in any way, shape, or form. But I do believe that there should be a much more creative way to minimize that cost that we have, considering everything else that is at stake for the benefit of the whole. So I really want us to keep that head over our shoulders in that perspective.
All right, any other comments, questions?
May I summarize next two weeks' meeting?
Please.
Next meeting. We'll take the conversation just as you've left it tonight and pick it up with the detail on decision packets and recommendations we have from this side of the table. We'll give you an update of the CSSU changes, those who are part of the CSSU process will know those and can probably do that segment as well as I could. We'll do a walkthrough of revenue and do tax rates, and we'll update you on anything we have in the arena of the allowable growth percentage.
Thank you.
And we would look to prepare you for all of the information necessary, so your last and final meeting would be deliberations and decisions.
Okay.
Is there any information we can have, like how much in advance we can have it? So if we filtered some questions before, you know, I don't know.
Well, good, good point. If there are questions that need to be answered in the meantime, all that we would ask is that you identify someone of the five of you to be the focal point for those questions, and then get us the questions at any point in time. And given our schedules, we'll try and get them all answered before your next meeting, but we'll try and get them all answered as quickly as we can.
And to that note, or on that note, to the extent we can get decision packets in advance so that we have time to digest them before they're presented, that would certainly be my personal preference. I can understand that there may be concerns of sensitivity, and I want to be deferential to that, but certainly.
We'll do what we can in that arena.
That would be great.
Yep.
Seeing that there's nothing.
Well, wait, can you identify somebody to take questions?
I'll do it.
Okay. And before you adjourn the meeting, I would request an executive session with the board.
I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel matters. Is there someone who would motion that?
Some moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining motion carries. We are now moved into executive session. Thank you all for coming.